Meeting for April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty here at the city council chambers. I'll read the introductory statement here. The governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the COVID nineteen outbreak. Mayor has determined that an in-person meeting of the city council is impossible or impractical without violating the governor's mandates. When an in-person meeting is impossible or practical, Iowa code section twenty one point eight permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary staff will be in the council chambers this evening. I have Carla Geyer and Valerie Northwith with me. The seven council members will not be in the chambers but will participate via Zoom conferencing. The video audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Comments for items that are on the agenda or for the public hearing may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the city council members, or by calling three one nine five nine six zero one seven nine during the meeting. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. Roll call please.
Oh four.
Here.
Bergen.
Here.
Drink how? He's muted. Drink how?
I am here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kangas.
Here.
Rafi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
All present, thank you very much. Item C, approval of the agenda as presented. Seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item D is a public hearing. During this public hearing, individuals may make comments by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members, or by calling three one nine five nine six zero one seven nine, the phone number here in the chambers during the meeting.
Adam.
Yes.
Did we introduce our guest council person who actually managed to show up this time?
I'll let you do that.
So our guest council person for this month has been Yusra Malik. She is the student body president for Warburg College. This is the first time she's been able to attend as she's had technical difficulties, but she is online. Warburg College just started her midterm today, so we can, I'd like to let her introduce herself and tell us how she's doing.
Hi, my name is Yusra. I apologize for not being able to attend the past couple meetings again, like Dr. Bergen's mentioned. I've had some technical difficulties with being home and because of the entire COVID nineteen situation, but I'm happy to be here.
Can you tell us about your major, where you're from, those sorts of things?
Yeah, so I am major, I obviously attend Warburg College. I'm majoring in neuroscience with a minor in Spanish. I'm currently, well, I'm finishing up my third year right now, so I'll be starting my fourth year in the fall. And I'm originally from Plainfield, Illinois, so that's where I am right now with my family.
Excellent. Do you have anything further for our guest, Brian?
That, that was all I wanted to make sure that she knew that, I mean, you have to give her the speech that she has right of voice but no vote.
That's right. I was giving you opportunity to chime in with any other further details you had, but that is exactly right, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, moving forward with the public hearing. This is the date and time and place for a public hearing on participation in a small business administration for giveable loan for Waverly Health Center in an amount not to exceed five million six hundred thousand dollars. Have you received any written or oral correspondence? Thank you, Carla. Any public comments out there? Any council members have any communication with anybody from the public as indicated in the request for public comments?
There's been some concern about, you know, not Waverly Health Center specifically, but in general hospitals and furloughs is what they've been calling them. I know this is typical of a hospital in general to do if their census is low, that they do send people home. So I don't know how Waverly Health Center is right now with, with that. If there's anybody on that could talk about that, but I know that there has been a lot of concern about hospitals in general for allowing.
I'll just make a brief comment. I think the hospital has tried as best they can to keep people there and working. I know that some of the nurses who typically work in areas where patient counts are down, and for instance, in surgery, are working at the screening stations and I've seen spy employees doing that sort of thing too, taking temps and checking people in. So I think they're doing their best to keep people working. But I think this, the only communication I've had is informal with people that they're hopeful that the hospital can get this money. And as you know, the governor recently said that elective surgical procedures could resume. And so I think the hospital is working on a plan as to how to do that prudently and safely. So I don't know the final plans for that at this point.
I know I've had some concern in the community about, you know, you know, here's five or six million dollars, obviously explaining to them that it's a convertible grant that goes into payroll. I guess, do we have any clarification if the hospital plan is doing, you know, a hundred percent into payroll or seventy-five percent into payroll? Or, or, or any clarification like that? Not that it would really matter, but just to perhaps let the community know. Know if anyone can speak to that. And then I did, but I did have a question with James. I know this, I know I'll probably ask this every time a hospital thing like this comes up. And I know, again, this won't apply here, but and we, you know, I think we had this with the thirty-five million dollar expansion too, because it comes under the city umbrella. What happens in, as in, in case of a default?
It's on the hospital. City has no liability or financial responsibility for this loan.
Excellent, thank you.
Go ahead. I've got CEO Jim Addy on the phone. We're gonna try to make this work. Go ahead.
I'm a little bit delayed here. I'm trying to follow the questions on YouTube and at the same time answer. So if I, if I need clarification, I may need, I may need you to repeat, but we are using a majority of the funds for, we will be using a majority of the funds for, so we don't have the answer.
What do you mean? That would be the.
A majority of ours are, are in payroll, and so that's where, that's where we're going to need those funds to, to further Dr. Rafi's point. We have tried, we have not furloughed anybody, we have not laid anybody off. And we actually tried very, very hard to limit the amount that we're, we're sending people home to the point where it is very business as usual for us. We're doing that without tax support. We, you know, made a commitment to our employees and we've tried to find jobs throughout the hospital. Unlike some of the other hospitals around us where you're seeing layoffs, you're seeing pay cuts, you're seeing jobs really just going away. We have not done any of that. We're actually pretty proud. We do however, need this five point six million dollars. We do, we do believe that we will qualify for it to be converted back to a grant, which should not impact the city at all. There's no extension of liability. It does not impact the city's abilities to borrow, but really it does mitigate some, not all, but some of the losses that we've taken while we prepared for the pandemic. Okay, I'm gonna hang up and listen, okay guys?
Right. Everybody hear me? Hear the thumbs up over there? Yes, no? Okay. Thank you, Jim, for calling in and, and addressing that. Any other conversation? From council? Nobody's jumping right at it there. So seek them, close the public hearing at this point. And ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty sixty-four determining to proceed with participation in the Small Business Administration's Payroll Protection Program and obtain a forgivable loan for the benefit of Waverly Health Center in the amount not to exceed five million six hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Any further discussion? See none. Roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drink how?
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
On a vote of seven yes, zero no, zero absent, resolution twenty dash sixty-four is approved and passed. Item E, under regular business, item number one. Resolution twenty dash sixty-five, a resolution approving a pro shop lease agreement with the Waverly Country Club for two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-two.
I will move approval of resolution twenty sixty-five, a resolution approving a pro shop lease agreement with the Waverly Country Club for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two with annual rent of eleven thousand dollars and two payments of five thousand five hundred dollars due on February fifteenth and October first of each of the three years.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Glazer. That's what I got. Any further discussion?
I was just curious as to how this rate compares to what retail space rental is in other parts of, of the city, just, I know I have voiced concern about kind of the relationship we have with the country club and the fact that we run a golf course for them. I know there are golf courses that have been technically closed, but I've seen people on the golf course, so it's kind of a concern that way. But I'm just curious as to how this compares.
I'm not honestly sure what the square footage is and the dollars per square footage. It's more of a functionality lease versus a dollars per square foot. We weren't really arguing the space of it versus the cost. It's a thousand dollars more than the prior lease, but we are looking at being open look longer times, which would increase utilities as well as I think they're doing a lot of the paper products, et cetera, for us. So in talking Garrett and looking at the overall lease, we think seem, we seem to think it's fair. It's a slight increase over where we were in the past and it was kind of negotiated out. They started a bit higher than this. We were looking to keep the same as last year at ten, so we kind of netted out about eleven. So it was not really a dollar per foot discussion, Tim. We can certainly calculate that for you and get that to you. It just wasn't something we were considering at the time.
One that, one thing to keep in mind with this is the seasonality of it. I know it operates somewhat year-round depending on what type of holiday events and rentals and that kind of thing, but that's, we're not down in Texas either, so. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Roll call vote, Carla.
Rafi.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drink how?
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty dash sixty-five is approved. Item two, under regular business, resolution twenty dash sixty-six, a resolution approving a beverage lease agreement with the Waverly Country Club for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll move to approve, uh, resolution twenty dash sixty-six, a resolution approving a beverage lease agreement, the Waverly Country Club for two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two, and receiving the Waverly Country Club, from the Waverly Country Club, five hundred dollars in June and September, approval of one thousand dollars for the three years.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Bergen. Any discussion?
I was just wondering, is, is this the same rate that it has been in the past, or is this increased rate also?
This is the same rate.
Thanks, Bill.
And this is money we're getting back, so there, we're paying eleven thousand, but is that right?
Correct.
We're paying eleven thousand and we're getting a thousand back.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, roll call Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drink how?
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty dash sixty-six is approved. Moving on to F. Item F is study session calendar. Item one is Waverly Chalrock Senior Recognition Discussion. I'll let Councilman Boffer, Ward Four, lead this.
So I just wanted to, I, I mentioned it last week a little bit. It's really just an update more than, I mean, we need some information, but right now the, there's some senior parents and, and the district, WSR district, are working with students and official from the health department and state education department to determine options for, for commencement activities. So, so the student senate is kind of talking about some ideas and of what to do. So this is something that we're leaving the students to decide what they want to do and determine the future depending on what's going on. So I just wanted to bring this to the city's attention and just to let you guys know that they may, here in the near future, ask for some type of support within the community and from the city. So once they know more about what they can do for commencement, they, they may come to us for some support in that. Also, they are looking at K-way and I think Waverly newspapers to see if there's some type of recognition they can do. So they've been working with, with them very well. And then the seniors, if there are any seniors out there or family, maybe they can reach out to their student senate to let them know what their ideas are. Or reach out, if you don't know who the student senate is, reach out to Mr. Weber, Mr. Fox for information on how to contact the student senate, because they're the ones that are researching some of the options for twenty twenty seniors commencement. So there's also, I think there's a lot of opportunities out there to recognize the seniors. You know, I do have two seniors, one of them here in Waverly graduating this year. So it is really important for them to be recognized, I feel. Maybe it's more important for the parents, I don't know. But whatever we can do to recognize the seniors, I'm willing to, I really want to support them, parents do. I know the city does, and I'm, I'm sure all of, all of us do. So they are, they were looking at some ideas for maybe flagpoles or something like that. But right now I think they have decided to go with like yard signs with pictures, so they're kind of working on that. Still pending on a placement for if they get those. So there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes that I don't think is getting recognized enough by the city and by, you know, people. There's, the teachers are doing a tremendous job, working behind the scenes. They're learning new things. They're trying to bring education to the students as best possible and try to, they are doing a great job supporting parents as well. So I just want to commend all the parents and all the teachers and all the administrators at the school that are working behind the scenes as well. So if anybody has any ideas or options or ways that, you know, we can support or recognize the seniors, it would just be appreciated, so.
Heather, do you have a sense of how many, do you know how many graduating seniors there are?
There's between a hundred, there's like a one hundred and seventy, maybe a little bit more depending on the dual enrollment.
I mean, I'm sure I've seen the same things that other people have in terms of, you know, banners on Main Street or, you know, pictures of the, all the different seniors posted around town. So I'm, I'm, those are the things that I've seen on Facebook just from already information and I haven't even been looking. So I think people who've been looking and thinking about this are going to come up with more ideas than I will, but.
There's a lot of ideas out there. We, we've kind of shut down the banners on Main Street. There's just too many seniors for what we have. So there's only sixty light poles available that are ready and engineered to be able to hold the banners. And with a hundred and seventy plus students, that just would be probably impossible to do.
Kind of why I was asking how many seniors we have, so we can get a sense of, you know, how much road we need if we're going to do something like that or how much space we would need to, to recognize everyone, so.
Right, and that's, it's great. We have so many seniors, but we're just not small enough to be able to do that like the small towns like in Denver. I guess they're, you know, they have a small enough class that they're able to do stuff like this. But there's just a lot of seniors, so we're, we're, we don't have enough light poles. So we are working on the other options for visual recognition as well. So, and I know there, there are some great ideas out there and, and like I said, there's a lot of people behind the scenes trying to not only work on education, but recognition of, of our seniors that are graduating this year.
I know I've seen the yard signs with several school districts doing those kind of things with the pictures. I just wonder maybe with the city if we would allow them to put them in Coleman Park for a weekend or something where that would get a visual for the, the students to have people that can walk through Coleman Park and at least see all of them together. Because most likely the yard signs would go to the students' houses and unless you're driving around, you're not necessarily going to see all of them or recognize all of them that way.
Well, I was actually thinking, we have that, I want to call the electronic billboard out on the corner at Coleman Park, kind of where the Santa's house used to be. I don't know if it's always out there, but kind of for, for display purposes. I wonder if we could set up some sort of a slideshow of the seniors' pictures and names where it rotates through them. It's, it's one location and, you know, you can stand out there, you know, each, each face is up there for thirty seconds and it'll take an hour to go through the entire class, but you can stand out there and see all the faces and all the names eventually. And that would be low cost, because we wouldn't have to print out the paper. It would just be the, you know, the electricity to run that thing. But that's a possibility.
Okay, that's, that's a good idea. I can bring that to the group about, I, I believe there's, not only are they getting some pictures up on Facebook with the seniors, but they're also, they have a video that one of the parents made. So that's definitely something I can bring back to them if that's, if that's an option, if we could do that. I know. Sorry.
Heather and I, we, we've talked about this as well, and the businesses have electronic marquees already. So that's something that the, the businesses can participate in. I don't know if we want to get, you know, maybe wider down Bremer Avenue a little bit. And Heather, did we hear a date on, you know, when, as far as the signs, when, when, when they think that can happen or when you were targeting it to happen?
I, I think they were hoping to get things rolling in the month of May and they're, so they're working on all the details right now. So once we know more, then they, so that they could let me know and we can bring it back.
Yusra, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I know some of the schools around like here, so my younger sister is also a senior in high school. They did the yard signs, which worked out really well. But then they also, like another school in the district reached out to like the students and specifically the seniors individually to send in pictures and memories from like their entire time, like at that like school. And so that, like they're putting those together to make a slideshow. And sometimes some of the schools also do like a, a picture of like when they were like young and like, like younger and then a corresponding picture of when they're like in their senior year of high school and like compile that into like a slideshow.
Thank you.
Anything else, Heather, or anybody else for that matter? I know Garrett's on.
I wonder if we want to maybe, maybe we just send an email or something to the chamber to see if they could reach out to businesses, perhaps. Trying to think of, there might be, you know, some creative ways. I know some other people have electronic marquees too, so. It's easy as sending off an email, which I can do too, so.
I'll give that information to, to the people that, at the school that are working on that and just have them, you know, reach out, maybe give them the option to reach out to Chamber too if they want to work with businesses and, and see if they can do that. So I'll, I'll talk to some of the leaders up there at the, at the high school and, and let them know and have them get ahold of Chamber and, and keep up some ideas. So, and give them the ideas that you guys are giving me. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Perfect. Thank you. Move on to item number two, under study session. Is local food donations and community gardens discussion, as requested by Councilman Schneider. I know the dynamics of this have changed kind of rapidly over even the weekend. So I'll let you lead it off there, Matthew, with your intent.
Yeah, well, you know, initially I was, and Councilman Roth, you and I had talked about this in January. So we were already getting started on this, hopefully. We got a good head start. But obviously it's pretty apparent anytime you close an economy for even a day, you're going to create more needs, let alone sixty days or whatever it ends up being, the needs are going to be enormous. I, I think we as a city need to understand what exactly those local needs are. You know, obviously when food production is down, I'm here in twenty-five, thirty. Um, you know, obviously when food production is down, I'm hearing twenty-five, thirty percent across all sectors, dairy, uh, meat, um, everything is, is going to be down, that's going to create a lot of hunger, and then you've got prices going up and all sorts of odd things going on in the economy, I know the United Nations is estimating, uh, a hundred and thirty million additional deaths due to, uh, food relation, food-related, uh, uh, instances from, from the pandemic, so, uh, you know, I think it's a very serious situation that we as a city should, should approach in a serious manner.
Yeah, Carla and I were just discussing this before the meeting a little bit here, um, we have some great resources right here in our community. Um, the city webpage shared it, I shared it on my Facebook page, um, today, something that the, wherever they shell rock, United Way page had put together, um, different food resources through Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Northeast Iowa Community Action Corporation, Redeemer Lutheran Church, uh, the United Way itself with their two-on-one number, they're kind of the hub for all of this. Uh, we got some community meals still going on at Peace United Church of Christ, um, out by, um, Prairie Links on the backside there, uh, wherever the cafe, the Grace Baptist, those are on Wednesdays, pieces on, uh, Peace United Community Meals on Thursdays, um. People that are needing diapers, child lunch programs, lots of great information, then another important one is just mental health, uh, resources as well, uh, delivery for vulnerable populations, housing and utility assistance, um, with, you know, all the phone numbers of different ways that these entities are trying to outreach and these are, they pull, uh, the people into needing those resources, so they try to get their message out, but they aren't able to identify the people that are in need, so, um, that's one side of it, a lot of these organizations, they appreciate, you know, financial contributions to help them. Um, it offsets a lot of their operating costs and, you know, the, the front side, the goods. Um, best way to find out what they need is to call and ask, check their Facebook page, website, those types of things. Um, I'm doing my best, I know that the city is doing their best, all of these entities are doing their best to keep pushing the information out for what is there. Um, so if you see a post out there, whether it be on the city's page and other council members' page, mine, somebody else's, please share that, because, um, it just might get into the right hands of the person that's looking for that resource at that time. Um, so, any other comments from any other council members?
I, I had a question on that, Mayor, did you get the sense that the need is more outreach or is need more, eh, we need more, you know, monetary donations, food donations? Is it more just getting that word out?
I think it's, it's both parts of that, is getting the message out that these resources exist, because tell you the truth, there are people that have never had a, a food insecurity before now. Uh, they've always maybe lived paycheck to paycheck, but now they're living, you know, stimulus check to stimulus check, or, you know, pay, paycheck to five days before paycheck. Um, so, the reality is, we can't judge and really determine what people need, so it is pushing the information out there so that the information that that one person needs can get it. And it might not just be, you know, Facebook, um, having conversations with people and, and so, you know, whether they, you know, they need it or not, but just saying, you know, talking to someone that you know that has little kids, saying, did you know that, uh, United Way has some resources for, you know, parents that need diapers? You're not implying that they need diapers, but they might know somebody that does need those diapers. So just having those conversations and, and spreading the message, uh, somewhat nonchalantly gets it into the right hands of the, the person that needs it. Now I know, uh, our community garden, you know, we don't have anything out there produce-wise yet to, to reap. Um, we're in the solely process and sure soon will be, um, but I would presume that, uh, we would love to see a bumper crop out there, right Garrett?
Absolutely, uh, last year, you know, the community gardens did, uh, about eighty-four hundred pounds of, uh, food donations. We donated food to, uh, most of it was to the food bank, about seventy-five percent. Uh, but then there was also food donated to Cedar Valley Friends of the Family, Waverly Senior Center, Waverly Senior Assisted Living, Community Action, and the Denver Nursing Home. Um, we are planning on still having our planting day on May ninth. Uh, we're still looking for volunteers for that. Um, anyone who is interested in volunteering, uh, can contact myself at Leisure Services and I'll get them in touch with, uh, Ron Lenth at the, uh, uh, Iowa State Extension Office. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, we're looking for a, uh, another good crop this year.
Garrett, was that May ninth?
Yes, May ninth at, let's see if I got the time here for you. Uh, nine o'clock AM, so, we're planning on, uh, having the first planting day from nine to eleven on May ninth.
And that'll be at various community gardens, not all in one place?
Um, well, the community gardens are all in one place, and then there's the orchard as well. Uh, but Ron and I have been talking, uh, we've come up with a pretty good plan, uh, to keep people separated as much as possible.
Good.
Thanks you, um, thanks Garrett for addressing that with the community gardens, um. I think what's most important, and kind of piggybacks off of Matt's question there about, is it getting information out, is it getting financial donations or, or product donations? Um, i- it's both of those, but there's a, a third leg here that, that Carla mentioned, give her, her credit for bringing this up a- again, is if you're in need, don't hesitate to ask, don't hesitate to go to these resources and, and take advantage of them, it's not taking advantage, make use of them, that's what they're there for. Um, you're not there to be judged, um, there's lots of other people that are in need. Um, you're, you're the, you're the target group that they want to do that, and when you go through, I, I've been on the working side of it, when you go through and, you know, like, out at Peace Church of Christ, get some meals for your family, get a bag of groceries for your family. Um, there's nobody there to judge you, yeah, you may say somebody that you know, or they know you, but they're there for the right purposes and they're not there to judge you or anybody else, so, uh, don't shy away from your needs. So.
Something else I just want to bring up, it's, um, definitely, we need people to communicate their needs. Um, but it all, sometimes people don't communicate their needs, or they won't, or they're too proud. So, one big thing to do, we do it all the time as nurses, is we ask, um, don't hesitate to ask somebody, are you okay? What do you need? Do you, hey, can I go ahead and bring you a meal tonight? So if you make an extra, um, some extra food or whatever, um, offer and take somebody food, um, this might actually help them out. Um, so even without asking or, you know, giving that if you can, um, but asking and pulling that information sometimes is, is important too, uh, because sometimes people won't, um, offer up that, that free, um, they won't, they won't say, hey, I'm struggling here, they'll just struggle quietly, so definitely asking your neighbors, asking your friends, um, asking a random person, you know, hey, are you okay? Is there something I can do, or, um, you know, maybe I can get you your meal tonight or something, or, or that, that might be helpful as well.
I'll just add that another resource, especially for older people, is the Meals on Wheels program, even if they've never used that program before. And right now they are distributing frozen dinners instead of delivering hot meals, and, uh, I believe they're doing that a week at a time, and the resource for that is Northeast Iowa, uh, area on aging, they, uh, organize that. You could also reach out to the Senior Center here in town for info about that, but I agree with Heather, a lot of people, um, we always ask at medical appointments how people's food supply is, um, and some people are very proud and will not use the food resources, um, that are available, um. And so I think it's, it's okay to make an assumption that if people have been laid off, lost their job, that sort of thing, they probably are having some food insecurity. Um, I would also encourage those of us, um, who have not been furloughed, whose incomes have not been cut, to make a financial donation. I went on the Northeast Iowa, uh, Food Bank, um, website, they have some very good information about what they're doing during this crisis, and, um, money never hurts an organization like that, and it looks like they put it to very good use, so I'll just make a comment about the community garden, um, I think it'll be pretty easy to do the planting with social distancing, usually it's, uh, um, families like to come and do that together, but much of it is done individually, and certainly the weeding is done individually, so we shouldn't have trouble social distancing, but I would encourage community groups, um, church groups, et cetera, to come and volunteer, the Exchange Club, um, that's one of our projects every year to come down there and work, um. And, uh, it, it's fun and you learn a lot, and, uh, definitely the food's going to be needed this year, so we will need more volunteers, because really, the, the more volunteers we have, um, the more produce we end up with. If we, if we don't have enough volunteers out there to harvest it, it'll go to waste, and we certainly don't want that to happen.
And is that really the sticking point as far as raising production is, is getting the help that we need?
It's weather, I think a lot has to do with the weather, um, and, uh, whether the, the climate and the, uh, different factors come together to have bumper crops of things, but some of it is, you know, if you look at a crop like tomatoes, then, and I'm a nice gardener, I'm learning every year I'm out there, but, you know, if the tomatoes sit there and don't get harvested, they'll rot. Um, and so, um, you know, we've been pretty fortunate, uh, with volunteers, but, but, uh.
And I did notice we have, and, and I'm not looking at the, I think Garrett sent us out the, uh, the production by, uh, by item, and it's quite a few different items, which I think is great, and, uh, but perhaps going forward, it might be wise to think too about, uh, you know, something you can really eat. Uh, I, I mean, there's, yeah, yeah, I don't mean that in a bad way, but, you know, a potato is a great thing right now, so, um, so hopefully you understand what I mean there, so.
Well, a lot of.
Parsley.
A, a lot of people do not, um, buy whole vegetables and cook them. Right, and so when was the last time you bought a head of lettuce, for instance, and so I think that some of it is getting people to eat vegetables. Um, Heather could probably comment on that too, oh, any parent could comment on that, I suppose, but I think, um, the other thing is getting people to eat vegetables or fruit, such as the apples, that might not look perfect. Um, and then how to cook them. A lot of people don't have basic cooking skills and don't know what to do with a raw potato. Or with a, um, you know, with a whole tomato, or with cold Robbie, or whatever the vegetable is, but I think they do a pretty good job of sticking with, with vegetables, uh, and produce that are common. Um, you know, they might try a new crop here and there, but, um, I think they do a pretty decent job of that, and the apple crop has exploded. And so I was looking at the numbers that Garrett sent us, and that's really been a project of Ron, uh, when, from the ISU Extension, but in the last two years, you know, he's, he's gone from four hundred and thirty-four pounds of apples to twelve hundred pounds of apples last year, and the year before that was sixteen hundred pounds of apples, so, um, and that's a, harvesting that is dependent on volunteers as well. But, but, uh, but a lot of it's weather, some of it's volunteers, and some of it is just, you know, if you get a bad crop of carrot seeds, nothing comes up, for whatever reason, so, some of it's luck.
And, and I think one other point here, I think it's really important that we, even as a council, we really touch with those agencies and, and stay in communication with them, because their needs are going to change really quickly, I'm sure, and, um, so, you know, we can perhaps be the mouthpiece for that and, um, and help with that, and and I guess I've just one other thing I'll add, I think we're extremely fortunate, uh, to live where we live, it's just, just, you know, we're, everyone's going to get fed, we just have to get the distribution, um, that kind of reworked perhaps. Um, and, but, you know, unfortunately the troubles, there are going to be some problems in the United States, so if, uh, they're going to lean on states like Iowa to export that food to them, so if we end up overdoing ourselves, that, that would be a good thing.
Excellent. Um, I'll thank Garrett in advance for the hopeful season, uh, maybe need to take some crop insurance out, I don't know, but, uh, hopefully we have a, a good turnout for planting day, maintenance, it's not just you plant and harvest, there's a lot of maintenance that goes in uh, along with that, so, if you're able and willing, they would take your help throughout the season, so. Alright, item G, staff updates, Mr. Bronner.
Um, I know we have a number of staff on currently, if they have any updates, I'll leave it to them, I'm not aware of any upfront that they're looking at though.
Uh, I do have just a quick update on the farmer's market. Uh, for the first few weeks, uh, they are starting with a pre-order, uh, and then they're going to have their pickup at the Embassy Vineyard Church. Um, right now I'm still waiting to get that website from them, uh, where you can go to preorder anything. Uh, as I get that information, in- information, I will pass that on. Uh, their first, uh, weekend would be this Saturday, uh, May second is when they're starting, so, uh, as soon as I get that information, I'll pass that on to you.
Thank you, Garrett, anything from Mike, Jess, Bill? Alright, item H, city council comments. I'll start with Mr. Glazer tonight.
Um, I don't have anything bad tonight.
I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Grinko.
Yeah, un- unfortunately I do have something bad, it's kind of surprises me that I have to bring this up again. How, uh, most of the ward birth students like you, Sarah, are, are home, and we're also in the middle of a period where we're supposed to be socially distancing from each other, but we've been having some issues in my ward with student parties again. And I just want to remind, I'm, I'm sure there probably aren't any students that are watching this city council meeting, but if there are, you know, please be considerate of, of your neighbors, if you're living in a residential neighborhood, you need to comport yourselves as, you know, people that live in a residential neighborhood, it's a little different than if you were living in, in a, you know, student, organization and dorm or something like that. And secondly, for the, the people that are living in the neighborhood, you know, if there is something going on in a house, it's causing disruption, noise, partying, whatever, you know, uh, please feel free to call the police, if you don't feel like calling the police, you're, you're concerned about doing that, call me and I'll call them for you. Uh, we've had incidents where the police have come out and have told the students to be quiet and, and they then become quiet, so it, it, it's nothing that is overwhelmingly bad, it's just that sometimes, um, young people need a reminder that, you know, that to be good citizens means to be considerate of those people that live around you, and sometimes just need a reminder of that now and then, so, uh, i- if there are any issues like that, um, a- and you don't want to call the police, feel free to call me, or if you just want to let me know that something's going on and you'd rather not have me call the police, that's fine too, but I would really appreciate knowing that these things are happening, uh, so we can make some plans to see if there's something we can maybe do in the future to, to, to kind of put a lid on that activity, so. Um, I, I, I did have one question actually for Mike Cherry though, i- i- if he's still on, if, if, are there any changes to the construction schedules that you put out a couple of weeks ago, any delays?
Uh, no, we're still good, June first.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Move over to Heather, please.
I don't have any additional comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen.
Um, I suppose my only comment is, as we're going through the quarantine, um, patience, I, I'm, I'm pleading all of our people to be patient. Um, this isn't going to be over quickly, it's going to take a long time for it to run its course. And what we have learned from history is that in the past, when we had these sort of long-term quarantines, as soon as the quarantine was lifted, everyone. everyone was out and circulating and partying and getting to know all their friends they've missed over the long quarantine. And it created a second wave of the disease that was worse than the first. So when the quarantine is lifted or as we ease back into more normal circumstances, please go slowly, go patiently, don't just go, I'm going to go meet every friend I haven't seen in the last week and shake hands with everyone I meet on the street. Please just take it slow and be patient, it's gonna, it's a long quarantine, it's a long series series of time. I know it's hard on everyone. But it's it, it's for the best. So please just be patient and think about our public safety in in the choices you make. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Move over to Ms. Rothie.
Thanks. I I just have, want to give an update on Heritage Days. I have the privilege of being the city council rep on that committee, and we have met a couple of times in the last month. As you can imagine, just like many other community events that are planned for the summer, they're trying to figure out, have been trying to figure out what to do, what's the most prudent course. And so I just want to read a statement that Jess Hamilton provided to me. She and Darwin Rittgers are the co-chair of Heritage Days. So I'm just going to read this email, if that's okay, that she sent. And and they're also going to be publicizing this on Facebook and Kway. So she says, hello, everyone, Waverly Heritage Days relies on sponsorship from our local businesses to ensure that our event remains mostly free of charge. We also rely on volunteers to pull this event off for everyone to enjoy. With our downtown area, community families, and other organizations being impacted by COVID nineteen, we have decided to postpone Waverly Heritage Days until 2021. We feel that we cannot ask anymore of people at this time. As a committee, we would rather encourage everyone to support the local businesses that have been an integral part of our success in the past. This was a very difficult decision that was not taken lightly. We intend to make next year's event a grand celebration. Stay tuned for events that we may hold this fall. So I will say that, and that's the end of Justice Statement, I will say that this was a difficult decision for the committee. This has to be one of the hardest working bunches of people that I have ever met. And they take it very seriously and and, but I think, given the economic circumstances and especially the public health circumstances, we thought that even if we went ahead with the activities, if we were still socially distancing, which it probably looks like we're going to be in the summer, it would be really difficult. And I will say that according to our meeting last weekend, the bands that they had booked for this year have been very gracious and have all been willing to come back in 2021. So I think that the committee will continue to do their planning and hopefully it can be bigger and better with better weather in 2021. As you all know, we, the city has already budgeted money for Heritage Days to give them a head start for this coming summer. And in my opinion, we ought to let them keep that money, it can be used for deposits and for investments going forward. And they'll they'll bank it and put it to good use, I think. So I don't know if people have questions or other comments, but but that's their statement for now.
I think that's a a great synopsis and viewpoint and movement forward for our our community to kind of shift that obligation to our merchants and and those types of things. I think it's a great way. I'm sure that James and Jess and I and others can discuss financials and how we can address that. All right, Mr. Schneider.
Nothing else to add this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Kangas.
I guess I would just echo Brian's kind of urgent caution and and patience as restrictions start to ease up, especially as you see on the news that other states and other counties, even in Iowa, our restrictions are being lifted a little bit more, a little bit more all the time. Just be patient with it, allow it to happen, it's going, it's going to happen, we are going to get, starting to get back to normal. But it's going to take some time to to ease back into it as opposed to just opening the floodgates and and pouring out there. That being said, do enjoy the weather, get outside, if you can, go for a walk, go for a bike ride. Those those opportunities are available, just maintain your social distancing. Enjoy doing some yard work or or whatever, so you're not just cooped up in the house all the time. And again, just continue supporting the local businesses that are open and and neat, whether it's the food businesses or or some of the other businesses that have opportunities available.
Thanks, Tim. I only have just a couple of things here. First of all, I'd like to thank Val for operating behind the scenes here and obviously the the folks at Warbird with their production team of getting everything done. Hopefully, our next meeting we'll actually be able to see what we see on the screen up there and not everybody just looking at at my bald head here. Take a moment also to thank Mr. Kangas for hitting up Kway this morning, you did a great job. I knew you could, that's why I asked you. And businesses out there, if you have a need of something, reach out, call the city. You know, we'll try to do the best that we can to to direct you to to some help that we we can. I'm looking forward to kind of echoing what Tim and then Brian had said. I'm really looking forward to recovery efforts and trying to come back to some sense of normalcy for the the future in our community. So just being able to go up and sit down at an establishment and see people I I recognize in the community and and that kind of thing. So this is really a try and time for that as well. So that's one thing that I wanted to be able to do is be out in the community, be approachable, and this really hampers that, obviously. So other than that, I have nothing further. I'll request a motion for adjournment.
Can we ask if our guest councilperson has anything to say?
Absolutely. I always forget that.
I have nothing else to add, but thank you for allowing me to join.
I I appreciate it. I wish things were different, where you could have been in person or you have the meetings as well. So maybe if we have a vacant spot in the future, Brian might call upon you again, who knows?
Definitely.
All right, now that motion, Brian.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion and a second, Bergen, Kangas, all in favor, say aye. Oppose the same sign. We are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.